King George County School Board Regular Meeting for December, November 9th, 2020 is now in session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Can we have a recognition tonight for the HOSA students?
Good evening. My name is Belinda Cameron and I am the nurse aide teacher and proud sponsor of the HOSA Health Occupation Students of America Chapter here at King George High School. First, I'd like to introduce Erin Coffey and Taylor Maros, our co-presidents this year, to tell you a little bit about what HOSA is.
Hi, I'm Erin Coffey and HOSA Future Health Professionals is an international career and technical student organization. HOSA's mission is to promote career opportunities in the healthcare industry. Being a part of HOSA allows you to learn so many new things about the world of healthcare and help students to prepare, to explore many different careers in the healthcare field. HOSA helps to expose students to many opportunities in the healthcare field and help students to strengthen their academic and technical skills. Every year, we've attended the HOSA State Leadership Conference and competed in many different events. This helps students to push themselves to learn more about the healthcare field.
I'm Taylor Maros. Our chapter goal this year is to compete and attend virtual conferences so we can connect with other chapters across the state. And we want to continue to help Heritage Hall like we have in past years by doing fundraisers throughout the school.
Thank you, ladies. Since its formation in 2016 with only 12 members, our King George High School HOSA chapter has continued to excel. In the fall of 2018, the chapter competed for the first time in the Virginia State Fair and brought home both second and third-place wins. That spring, seven students attended the State Leadership Conference and again proudly brought home a second and third-place win qualifying them to go on to the International Leadership Conference. In the fall last year, our students brought home first, second, and third-place wins at the State Fair. Last spring, literally hours, and when I say hours, I mean hours, before the club was scheduled to depart for the State Leadership Conference on March 13th, our state went into quarantine. This did not deter our students. They accepted the challenge of the quick change to a virtual competition. And two of our students placed in their categories, Josh Gentry and Shaylan Hampton. So I'd like to present Josh with his second-place medal. He competed in the category of Human Growth and Development. And Shaylan Hampton took first place in the category of Life Support Skills. Shaylan then went on to compete in the international competition and again making George Foxes proud and brought home a first-place win in the world. Can I say "the world"? As you can tell, I'm extremely proud of her and all of my HOSA members that have risen to the challenges we face in this virtual environment. I'd like for Shaylan just to take a moment to tell you a little bit about the event in which she competed and won.
Hi, my name is Shaylan Hampton and I competed in the Emergency Prepartness category for CPR and first aid. So I spent several months basically preparing the mastery of skills in CPR and basic life support skills, so splintering of broken bones and the treatment of heavy bleeding.
Thank you very much for allowing us to recognize these students and their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys do a great job. Okay, moving on, we're going to go to public and employee comment. I just want to make a quick statement. As chair, it is my responsibility to maintain order within this meeting and therefore the following procedures will be observed. An individual will be called out of order if any profanity is spoken or any defamatory of any individual of the staff of King George County Schools or a parent. If an individual is called out of order, their remaining time will be forfeited and they will be asked to take a seat. They are called out of order for the second time, they will be asked to leave and if necessary escorted by the King George County Deputy. At any time if an individual becomes disruptive, they may be called out of order and asked to leave the meeting and if necessary will be escorted by the King George County Deputy. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open up the public employee comment. We'll do a public employee comment for those that are here first and then we will move to the virtual attendees. First up is Dee Strauss, Jessica Wang, and Natalie Canoe. Three minutes. Yes, I'm sorry. So we will, a three-minute time interval may be exercised. So just please state your name and then Dr. Benson will start the buzzer. And I believe if you look on the podium there, it'll have red, green, and blue. Yes, so we give you a little bit of a warning.
Good evening. My name is Dee Strauss. I'm the DECA advisor and marketing teacher here at King George High School. I'd like to introduce you to our co-presidents and let them tell you a little bit about what we're doing with National DECA Month.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the King George County School Board and members of our school and community. I am Jessie Wang, co-president of King George DECA.
And I am Natalie Canoke, the other co-president of KG DECA. We represent the King George High School DECA chapter and are proud to celebrate November as National DECA Month. We want to share with you what our DECA chapter has planned to celebrate for our international organization.
For our first week, we're introducing our officers every day and our annual Little Caesar's fundraiser is all virtual and going on now.
For the second week, we're celebrating DECA Fall Spirit Week. So today was your favorite fall photo. Tomorrow is show us your DECA diamond. Wednesday is get some fresh fall air and enjoy the great outdoors. Thursday is post your favorite DECA Throwback Thursday picture and Friday is PJ Day.
And for the third week, in preparation for Global Entrepreneurship Week, we asked DECA members on Instagram to share with us, if you could create a small business, what would it be? And near the end of the week, we will release a poll for members to vote on their favorite idea and the winner gets a shout-out on our KG DECA account. And our Thanksgiving drive, the donations for it are due by Friday, November 20th, and the person with the most donations gets a shout-out. And we are also in the midst of signing up for DECA District Competition and DECA State Competition.
And for the fourth week for Thanksgiving, tag @KGDECA Instagram and an Instagram story of a picture of what you're thankful for.
This week, we will hold our annual Veterans Day 5K and One Mile Fun Run on Wednesday. Please join us for the fun and registration is at 8:30 at the King George High School Stadium. All proceeds go to the Sum Game Ball Foundation.
Our Running Lawyers Program continues on Saturday mornings from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. This is a running club open to all kindergarten through eighth graders, boys and girls, and we are running in several 5Ks including our own KG Running Club, Turkey Trot with Tutus on Thanksgiving morning at 8:00 a.m.
We are sponsoring families for Thanksgiving and Christmas with King George Social Services, collecting food now for the Thanksgiving families. We continue to look for other ways that we can connect, compete, and provide community service here in King George and beyond.
We appreciate your support of this chapter and you celebrating National DECA Month with us by providing us this opportunity to share with you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, don't run off.
Thank you.
So y'all get your group started.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next is Brian Gregan.
I'm Brian Gregan, 9485 Elm Court, King George, Virginia, and I have a fifth grader and a first grader at King George Elementary School. Came here tonight to express my extreme disappointment for last week's vote to remove the in-person option of kindergarten through second grades. As limited as it was, it was still an option, which I thought was progress. I feel like the in-person parents are not having their voices heard. I think if you saw what was out front tonight, the peaceful protest for parents who were advocating for the in-person option, it was pretty evident that the community wants an in-person option. I think that's pretty clear at this point. And I've sent multiple emails to the board and had conversations with many of the board members and multiple conversations and a couple we don't agree, but we still discuss. And a couple of things I just wanted to point out, and I've sent these emails to the board and Dr. Benson before, but, and I think I sent this one this morning, but there was an NPR article recently, October 22nd, 60% of US schools have an in-person option as of election. So most of the US has an in-person option for schooling. But for some reason, King George, I guess we are in an extreme hotspot because we are not able to have an in-person option. I don't really understand why, but we do not. And there's, you know, there's a lot of support to allow children to be back in school. They're shown to be not spreaders, you know, it's not a community spread problem. It's just a matter of, you know, having the proper plan in place to get the kids back at school, which I think we had with the last option that was presented. And before I'm done here talking tonight, I did want to bring something else up. Per Freedom of Information Act request, I was able to obtain the teacher survey from September. And what those results told me were, and this is just from the statistics that I gathered from that survey, was 29% of the teachers and staff for the elementary school level were not comfortable with returning. 71% were, you know, there was, I've got the specific numbers here. 33% of the respondents were somewhat comfortable and 38% of the respondents were comfortable with minimal or no concerns. So I'm not really sure if that changed dramatically between September and now, but at any rate, it seems like everything's pointing to a return to in-person. I hope that the plan is in place and gets in place to have us have an option for in-person. That's all.
Thank you. Next is Kimber Green.
Good evening. I spoke a few meetings ago about the mental health of our children. I feel as though now, more than ever, is important to reiterate these words. The mental health of our children, our educators, and our parents are at stake. I feel like hearing from a seven-year-old child might make more of an impact than hearing from me. My son wrote a letter to you, Dad. He is a second grader at Sealest Elementary School. Dear School Board, I was so excited to finally go to school. It is hard to do school on the computer. I want to see my teacher. I want to see my friends. I feel sad always being home. I loved school, real school. Many of my friends stopped coming to computer school. Where did they go? This is hard. School was fun. My mom told me you canceled real school. I don't understand. I was so excited. That morning, I felt like you canceled Christmas. I was so sad. I will ask Santa to bring Christmas, to bring school back. The words of a seven-year-old. Santa might not be able to bring school back, but you can. You have the power. You have the power to bring hope and life back into the community and to the hearts of our children. Yes, virtual school is working for some and for many, but it is not working for everyone. Children are isolated and left to learn many things on their own. It is not the same learning on a computer as it is live in person. There's a bond and a trust that is formed between teachers and students. When children are in class, the teacher gets to know them and recognizes signs of when they are struggling. They can help children succeed. We all want our children to succeed. Many children are failing, and that is because we are failing them. We owe it to every child in this community to provide a proper education. These are impressionable years. What impression are we leaving upon our children? Are we nurturing their desire to learn or are we crushing their spirit? It is one thing to make a plan saying school will start at a certain date and knowing that we need to wait until that date. It is quite another thing to give parents, teachers, and children false hope. You continue to provide false hope and for that, I am sad and disappointed. You were elected to make sound decisions that propel our educational system forward. Instead, you are sending us backwards. I ask that you make a solid plan to send our children back to school, all of our children. The board has failed to make a plan. Every meeting, I hear you make a plan to make a plan. The time has passed. It is time we move forward. The school system all around our county have made the same plans and they have returned to school. They made their plans and implemented them. We still don't even have a plan. What are you waiting for? Are we waiting for your term to be over? Are you waiting for someone else to make the decision?
Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you very much.
We can't wait for Santa to make the decision.
Thank you. Deanne Fairfax?
My name is Deanne Fairfax. I live at 7340 Pepper Mill Road, King George. I have spoken here before. I have sent emails. I've provided statistics. I've talked to teachers, parents all across this area. I cannot understand, after sitting here and listening to Mr. Benson, the principals of all the schools set out plans. People keep saying we don't have a plan. You have asked the teachers and the principals and our superintendent over and over again to give you plans, to answer questions, to give you proposals. And they do that and they come up here and they present them and you vote and then you turn around at the last minute and you pull the vote. You give us dates. You tell us when we're going back. You tell us half virtual, half not virtual. We're going to do it this way. We're going to do it on this date. And then you change the date. You push the date back. Then you take the date away. You need to lead. They have made a plan. They need you to implement the plan. They need you to fill in the gaps, tell them what they need to do to prepare. There have been surveys after surveys that have shown overwhelmingly that the teachers want to go back, the students want to go back. A huge number of this county want to go back. It's 70 and 80% across the board. It is a very small percentage that needs to stay home and protected. We understand that. Yes, protect the small percentage, just like we protect the special needs during the year. But we do not need to keep the school closed. You need to open it. You have plans. Lead.
Thank you. Natasha Ward?
Superintendent, members of the school board, school employees, and community members, I stand here today again demanding answers as to how and why this school district and most importantly, the students and the families that you serve are at the mercy of our elected officials that have failed to prioritize the education of the children in this community. I stand here tonight, as I have in the past and as I will every opportunity that I can, seeking accountability for your inactions. Each week that passes, some children do not return to the classroom, causes irreparable damage, most of which will not be clear for years to come. You are setting the perfect stage for academic failure exacerbating already socioeconomic inequalities and almost the impossible task of overcoming poverty without education. We live in a country that has failed our children with the decision to open restaurants, bars, casinos, and entertainment venues over schools. Our government has failed to prioritize our children, the future of this country, but you, we can change that. I demand more for my child and I refuse to stop this fight. To the members of the community that feel the need to voice their opinion regarding what is best for the interests of my child, I ask why. No one has told you that you must return to the classroom despite other districts throughout the country that have not offered virtual instruction. Our district has recognized that students and families deserve a choice. I am asking for that choice, a choice to determine what is best for my family, my child, not yours. I do not spend hours on social media telling you all the reasons why virtual education doesn't work. I do not criticize the decisions that I make, you make, you make, nor do I use rhetoric in my argument. I simply ask the same. I believe you when you say that you do not feel safe sending your child to school. I believe you when you say that you have personal or medical reasons, and most importantly, I support you. For the school employees, I understand your fear. It's real and I'm not standing here tonight trying to convince you otherwise. What I am going to tell you is that I was scared too. After my first COVID patient, I showered at the hospital. I stripped my garage and I showered again when I got home. I cried all the way home trying to decide if I should live in my basement until COVID was over. We were terrified. We didn't kiss our children or sleep with our partners, but our patients needed us, maybe even someone that you love needed us. So we did it, day after day, wearing the same N95 for a week, scrubbing our hands until they bled slowly each day, realizing that with a mask and good hand hygiene, we would be okay. And should we catch COVID, thank goodness, chances are incredibly good, we would be okay. We are not martyrs and I'm not asking for any special recognition. I am asking you to remember that you are needed too. My child needs you and she needs to return to school.
Thank you. Janine Carroll?
Hello, my name is Janine Carroll. My daughter goes to King George Elementary. She's a kindergartner, or I would say she was supposed to go to King George Elementary. Right now, she sits in the daycare with somewhere between 25 and 30 other children, all attending virtual school. They don't wear masks. They aren't social-distanced. They help each other like children are supposed to. Their daycare providers act as de facto kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade teachers the best they can. There are a lot of working parents in this county. There are a lot of people staying home, trying to work and trying to teach their children at the same time. These children are not doing well. They're doing okay. They're doing the best they can. They could be doing better. We are 12 weeks, yeah, 12 weeks or so into the school year. They could have gone back. First, it was August. Then it was September 7th. Then it was October 19th. Then it was November 5th or 2nd, and then the 5th. And now it's maybe in January, maybe, I don't even know if you picked a date, next semester. Really? Let these kids go back to school. Let them learn. There are children you have lost forever. There are children who aren't going to go back. 10th, 11th, 12th graders that this isn't working for. They're gone. There are SOL spores that would never come back.
Find a way. Do your job.
Find a way. There are lots of ways. Clean. That's all it is, really, clean. Colleges, lots of colleges are back. They're virtual. Give us that choice that you said you were giving us and allow it to be implemented. This has been a joke. Stop making our children's education a joke. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Lewis?
My name is Justin Lewis. I am a parent of a first grader that goes to Sealston Elementary School. I'm the one who organized the protest tonight. We had about 75 to 100 people out there in support of something. You all have failed us. It's not just one person. I remember when I was in school and I had a group project, it took all of us working together to come to a solution. And to this point, you have failed our community. You have failed the kids. You have failed the working class and you have failed the teachers. And it's not acceptable. And I'm not going to stand up here and act like it is. That's why these people are here tonight. We are not saying 100% in school. We're not saying 100% virtual. We're saying we want a plan that you can stick to. At this point, if you cannot do your job, I will be setting up a protest for every meeting y'all are at. And we will have members of this community come out to every single one because they're sick of it. We can't make plans going forward because y'all cannot do your job that you are elected to do. And if you can't do that, then you should resign effective immediately tonight and let someone else handle the job. Let us have an election and have someone step up because I know there's plenty of people, including myself, that would be willing to do the job because you're failing us. And if you don't resign, we're going to be working on a recall vote. We are working on it tonight. I had signatures for every single one of you. Every single one of you. Because I'm not picking and choosing. I'm letting the community decide. It's not okay. We need to come up with a plan. It is November 9th. This started March 13th. And we're still asking the same questions we were asking then. And this community has had it. So get your act together or I promise you, I'm going to make your life hard. And this community is going to make your life hard. We're going to be at every meeting doing this exact same thing. You're going to have hour-long meetings with public comments. We're going to protest every meeting because we want a solution and we need a solution for everybody, not one side or the other side. A solution that works. Stop your bickering and come up with something for this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Melissa Phipps?
It's hard to speak with a mask when you wear glasses. For those of you that wear glasses, you understand.
That's their choice.
Sorry, I'm trying to find my...
She's social-distancing. I think she's fine.
Yeah, and they're wiping it, so that's totally good. Okay, my name's Melissa Phipps. I have five kids. One has already graduated through the King George County Schools and two that are currently in it, or sorry, three, but he's not in it now. He's going to a different preschool instead, and a two-and-a-half-year-old. And I really feel that what's going on is going to impact even my two-and-a-half-year-old. It's sad that what's happening now is going to impact these kids for a really long time. So we need to find a way to minimize that impact on them. It's great to see these young ladies from DECA out here tonight. They're not letting the risks of COVID interfere with how they're contributing to their own social involvement in school. They're participating. It's great. They're not letting the risks of COVID interfere with how they're helping our community, their school. That's so great. They're not here anymore, but I'm so proud of them. But it's not fair to the kids that don't already know that DECA leader, that don't have an opportunity to walk through the schools and the halls and learn about the clubs and figure out what they can participate in so that they can have these opportunities on their college resumes that they did participate in DECA, that they are helping in the community. Nobody has a chance. It's not fair to the kids that don't have a chance. So that's obviously biased success stories that we're seeing tonight. And I want you to think about that. There's so many kids out there that aren't having any opportunity. The ninth graders are supposed to be in high school. any opportunity, the ninth graders are supposed to be in high school figuring out how to be involved, they're not getting that chance. It's not fair. Most of the families, as everybody's heard tonight, want to be back in school five days a week, they know the risk, they know that the risk of virtual school outweigh the risk of COVID. Hopefully you guys realize this. They know that the risks of COVID are a small percentage, and those people that have pre-existing conditions, comorbidities, we definitely need to keep them safe, and they should not be going back to school. But it's not fair. We're all playing taxpayer money, but those of that small percentages, they're getting the preference, they are getting the special treatment, and all of us don't matter, our voice doesn't matter, it's like you don't even care about how the other, what is it, 80% feel? Everybody understands that when we go back to school, they may get COVID, and that's okay, they're gonna get COVID, they're gonna heal, they may bring it home to their loved ones, they may get COVID, they may heal, and the people who are at risk, they should not come back to school. If they have a loved one at home that's at risk, they should not come back to school. But the people that don't, why are we suffering?
Thank you, ma'am.
Next name is Derek, and I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. Thank you, sir. Arseno, that's an A, okay. Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Derek Arseno. I live on Mattaponey Lane, 7567. I'm in the Navy. We have not stopped school. The Navy, I work at the schoolhouse in Dogren, we haven't stopped at all, not a single day has held back from instruction. We've had eight cases where we thought somebody had it and went and sent them tested, and only three confirmed, and haven't stopped. It can be done, we wash our hands, no water fountains. It can be done. I'm there every day. And a little bit more of my life, I had to go to a mid shift, so I work from 2300 to 07. Then I come home to my son, and I have to teach him, you have any idea how hard it is to teach colors when your dog tired? How to teach 1 through 20? This is hard, and he's the one suffering. My son, he's my only one, he's my whole life, I'm a single father, I don't have a wife or a girlfriend to depend on. This is his life, I don't have anybody else. I've sailed most of the oceans in the world, teaching a five-year-old after a hard day of work is way harder than doing any of that. I told my mother, who's here to help me right now, that I'd much rather be at sea, risking my life every day than having to do this terrible schedule. My sister, who's moved in with me to help me with my son, she's a senior here, not anymore, she can't do online learning, she's on the verge of dropping out. My sister's life is almost ruined. I'm not a high school graduate, I was dumb too and dropped out, but I worked hard, went to college, I don't know if she'll have that drive, but her life is on the verge of ruining, because she didn't meet anybody here, didn't have any friends, because she moved from Delaware. I talked to a senior somewhere outside, and she has great aspirations to go to the Air Force Academy. You know what, everybody else's junior year, they're gonna look terrible for the extracurricular, but her life, she can't go to school, she can't get any extracurricular, so the decisions that you make here could change whether or not her life and her dreams are gonna be met. I really implore you, it can be done, it has been being done in the military. I've done it every day and haven't stopped.
Ben Katzen, another, I'm sorry.
Thank you, as you mentioned, my name is Ben, I have a 15-year-old son, he's a junior. I'm just going to add a few numbers. Everyone else here who has spoken has probably said what they needed to say much more eloquently than I could. Does anybody have any idea how many cases of COVID have been contracted in King George County? I would say the student body vastly outnumbers that. We know a lot more now than we did back in March. We know how to protect from it, we know how to treat it. I implore you, these students need the personal experience. I know a lot of their lives are already behind a screen. As I said, I don't have much to say, I came grossly ill-prepared, but I have to say something, because this is unacceptable. Thank you.
Cindy Weaver? No. Sidney, I'm sorry. Is it Weaver?
As you said, my name is Sidney Weaver, I am in 10th grade here, and I have two siblings, one is in 3rd grade, the other is also in 10th grade. He has, my brother has a difficult time staying awake for school, and I have a difficult time staying awake for school too. And my little sister, she is in 3rd grade, and she's very excited, but she never gets to actually see her friends. And she doesn't pay attention because, she doesn't like doing it because it's on virtual, she can't go and see her friends, she can't talk to them. We need social interactions with other people. It's not good for kids to not have social interactions with people because it affects how we think, and it's just, it's going to get to the point to where kids just completely stop doing school, and there's nobody else to blame, but it's definitely not our faults because it's hard to keep up. Teachers constantly give us work. I mean, my friend one time got 17 assignments for one class, and that's ridiculous. I mean, one or two assignments is good for the day, but 17? And you should put us back in school, because virtual school is not acceptable for any of us, and we will purposely fail, and it's not our fault. Thank you.
I have a senior with an IEP, and I want to share with you just my personal experience as to how this school year is going. In August, whenever I found out that we were gonna do 100% virtual, I had to call an IEP meeting. Nobody reached out, nobody said how this was gonna go for my student. I was told that they had no additional accommodations, that I was to just be patient to see how it went, because the schools didn't really have a plan for special ed during this time. I waited, and it wasn't until this week, whenever I was asked to sign something and absolutely refused, that the teachers decided, we'll have another IEP meeting. That's three months, he's a senior, that's a lot. Nobody has reached out to me, and I'm a pretty vocal parent. I can only imagine what the other special ed students are going through, along with those parents that don't have a clue. We look to our school board and our educators to help us teach our children. So I believe that you've tied their hands. They didn't have a plan in August, they don't really have a plan now, and it's not for a lack of the teachers really wanting to help these kids, there's no options. There's no, I asked for a specific list, what can we do in virtual learning to accommodate my son's specific needs? There's no list, none. You gotta do something, you gotta have a plan, open the schools back up, let the kids come back, let the teachers teach the way that they were educated themselves to teach. Thank you.
Friendmother of three children that I have full custody of that attend King George School, and have for, the baby is currently in 4th grade, she's special needs, she's been attending school for eight years here in the county since she was two years old. She started at the Early Education Program. This year, she will not even do the virtual schooling. Children with special needs have attention issues. She gets on the computer, she hears blah, 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 they ask her questions she cannot answer, she loses interest by 11 o'clock, she's done. I have a 6th grader and a 5th grader as well. They are being bullied online, some of the language that they are being called is unacceptable. The school is trying to address it right now, the inappropriate names, there's no one to monitor these chats that these students are in while they're doing virtual learning. These girls are being called names that, for obvious reasons that you said at the beginning of the meeting, profanity, that I can't speak here this evening, but I have addressed it with some members at the school, counselor, social worker, principal, and tomorrow we're supposed to have a meeting about it. But I think the best thing is to get these kids back in school. My girls have had perfect attendance since they've been enrolled in this county. They have like 20 absences now, because I refuse to put them on the web for them to be subjected to all these obscenities and vulgarities that is going through, you know, things that they're hearing every day that is not suitable for children to hear. They really need to go back to school, they really do. As every parent in here has said, the virtual learning has abolished some of their self-esteem. I've got one granddaughter that is mixed, she's biracial, kids are telling her online that you're not part of their family because you're the N-word, and they're white. She is like emotionally torn up over that, that children are teasing her online. How can you be part of that family? You gotta be adopted, you're not white, they're white, you're a N-word. These kind of things are not acceptable, and as parents that work, like all these other parents have said in here, when you've got three kids, online learning, you can't be at every computer watching everything going on when they're pretty much on the same schedule. So my thing is, unlike every other parent in here, we need to get our kids back in school and let them get their education, because what's going on with them now is really detrimental to their mental health, their social well-being, everything, their overall, everything as a child is being destroyed. And that's all I have.
Mr. Vance, we're ready to move to virtual comments? Are you gonna post them on the computer for me? Yes, sir. Did you know about the signup sheet? Okay, sure, come on up, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that wasn't aware that you had to sign up before?
Thank you, Janine. My name's Amos Freeman. I've been a resident in King George County for six years. I have three children, I'm a single father. I work full-time, and for the better part of the first couple of months of the COVID quarantine, when we all were forced into working from our houses and not being able to go to work, I learned really quickly that I'm not a teacher. I'm not a teacher, and neither is my daycare provider, she's not a teacher. And like many of you here who have children in daycare, I'm sure that your daycare providers are not teachers either. However, they're now tasked with being teachers, and I just would really like to see you guys come together with some type of plan to offer our children the option of going in person. The children, or the families, or the faculty or staff that doesn't want to go in person, they should probably have the option to do the virtual. We have plenty of people in that category on both sides, on the school side and on the parents and children's side. What's even more disappointing than the fact that our children are in school is the fact that it was apparent right out of the gate that there was not any practice or training for our teachers who are also not IT professionals, they're teachers, on how to work all of the new software they needed to be able to work. There was no coordination between the teachers on which software we're gonna use. It seemed like for my first grader, every single teacher had a different idea about how they were gonna conduct their class, what apps they were gonna use to assign work and how it would be graded. My 7th grader, always been a straight-A student, she seems to have taken to this like a fish to water and doing just fine. It's the kindergarten-aged students, that you can't just stick in front of a computer when you work full-time, or expect that your babysitter's gonna have the same vested interest in that child's education as you would as a parent, and stick them in front of a computer and say, alright, do your assignments. And on top of that, there's no way for us as parents to figure out whether or not they're doing and keeping up with the assignments, without coming home from a hard day's work and then watching every single video that their child was supposed to watch, just to see what they were supposed to be doing. My first grader's teacher sent an interim report home, and it said, your son has been missing assignments. I said, what assignments is he missing? She, 20 minutes later said, oh, that was Mrs. Day.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, thank you.
Anyways... We'd like to have our children back at school. Thank you for her.
Okay, Mr. Vance, we're ready for virtual comments, please?
Hi, I am Melissa Henderson. I am sure I am just one of many disheartened, agitated parents you have heard from this past week. I truly appreciate Ms. Pansiera and Mr. Collins for everything they have done. They have both had the determination and focus to put kids first and get children back in school. I sent a very heartfelt email to the entire board last week, and Ms. Pansiera and Mr. Collins were the only ones to even acknowledge it. My own district representative didn't even acknowledge it. The rest of the board has been negligent, they have been indecisive, wishy-washy, and last week made the last-minute preposterous decision to delay these children at least another quarter, despite the fact that they had already established and merely executed a plan that met the provisional requirement as outlined by Virginia's Phase Guidance from July. Fawcett County sent 7,000 students back to school today. Prince William County is sending kindergarten students back tomorrow, with a face-in approach to get the remainder of the grades, including middle and high, back by February 3rd. Prince William County has had over 15,000 cases. They have had more cases in one day than we have had since March, which makes it mind-boggling why our children are still at home. Many teachers worked tirelessly around the clock, most probably giving up their entire Halloween weekend to put the finishing touches on... to put the finishing touches on implementing a safe environment for children to return. And that was all completely disregarded by last week's decision. Most of you do not have the respect for the teachers. You have respect for a small percentage of the teachers. Why is it safe for the very teachers who complain about returning to go out to eat, go on vacation, get their hair and nails done, or expect their mail delivery person to deliver countless Amazon packages, but it isn't safe to teach children? I wonder what would happen if all essential employees protested and got their way? Would we have no healthcare workers, police officers, firefighters, paramedics, grocery store workers, et cetera? And most of these essential employees were not provided adequate PPE. It is time we put the focus back on our children. Your decisions are affecting the future of children succeeding in school and life, particularly for at-risk and lower-income children. The virtual learning that is in place is not working for most students. These are key learning years, particularly for the younger children, and they are missing out on fundamental developmental elements. The mission of the King George County Schools is to prepare our students to be valuable contributors to society by providing the highest quality education that will engage and challenge our students by transforming them into lifelong learners. The students will develop the knowledge and skills necessary to become active participants in society and face the challenges of the future. You are failing our children. The amount of face-to-face learning being provided through virtual learning, coupled with technology issues, does not amount to much. How many of you have even logged on to even one virtual class to see how it is going? We are one of the lucky households with real internet and my daughter still gets booted multiple times a day. A few parents complained about a lack of in-person specials. My daughter gets approximately 10 minutes with a specialist teacher a day and then several different complex projects a week we are somehow supposed to make time for on our own. The county is not paying me to have childcare while I work from home alone with three young children while my husband is out on the front lines. I start working at four in the morning and often work another two or three hours in the evening after they are all in bed because I am expected to be a supermom. And I wish I had more time so I could go into all the statistics regarding how internet crimes against children have more doubled during the pandemic.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening. My name is Candace Poles and I'm a resident teacher and parent here in King George County. I want to thank Dr. Benson and our administrative staff for all their hard work and dedication. You all did an outstanding job and we couldn't be any more grateful. On the other hand, our board has failed our community when they changed the plan at the last minute. A lot of time and energy went into creating a safe learning environment for students. No plan will ever be perfect. Nothing is perfect. And if we're expecting perfect, then students will never get back in the building this year. Safety measures have been put into place. Virtual education is not working for all and we're required to give all students a free and appropriate public education. When I asked what the guidelines are to deem a building safe for students' return, the response I got was you don't have guidelines, you're not a medical professional or a teacher. But we do have recommended guidelines from the CDC. In regards to being a medical professional, you're right, and neither are teachers. We can only put in proper safety precautions to reduce the risk of transmitting the virus. Here at Potomac, I think we knocked safety precautions out of the park with masks, face shields, gowns, Plexiglas, and so on. I am not against virtual instruction because it is working for some. But our community needs options for those that virtual is not working for, such as my son. A perfect example, it works for some, but not for all. My daughter is in 10th grade and would excel in any learning environment and is doing great. My son, on the other hand, in eighth grade, struggles every day and is about to lose the opportunity to obtain a high school credit for algebra while in middle school. We are required to give these kids a free and appropriate public education and are failing so many at this time. So where do I start? Connectivity is an issue across the board. Accurate assessments are another. Parents are continuously helping and giving answers to students when it's imperative we get accurate data so we know what they need help with. I would love to leave mics on, but the background noise makes it difficult to concentrate. The lack of one-on-one support and ability to focus is another. Direct corrective feedback is nearly impossible in this virtual world. Many kiddos are on their own to get materials, find pages, and so on, and it stresses them out. Daycares are loud and distracting. I have a hard time hearing these kids and they have a hard time hearing me. I know daycares are doing their best with what they've been given and I do appreciate, however, it's still difficult. We currently do packet pickup for nine weeks. However, if you know anything about being a good teacher, instruction changes daily. If a student needs help with a word virtually and points to it, we can't see it. If they try to hold it up, they lose their place. These are just a few. Virtual learning is a one-size-fits-all model and is great for advanced kids, but useless for our at-risk learners. From a developmental standpoint, virtual learning is entirely inappropriate for K-2 learners. We may not be medical professionals, but what we do know is child development. Children have academic, social, and emotional doors that open during different points in their development. They only stay open for so long. And when these doors close, they may never open again. Of course, children are resilient and it is fair to say that most will be able to fill in the gaps over the next few years. But unfortunately, the world we live in is not perfect and not every child learns the same. It is from or from the same household. The reason for this virtual learning is risk management. This is all to combat the immediate risk, which is obviously COVID-19. But what you're failing to acknowledge is the long-term risk, which includes major deficits in literacy, math, critical thinking, and social skills. To me, those risks are far scarier than COVID-19 and will require far more resources, time, and money to recover over the next 11 years. It's time to stop kicking the can down the road. There's nothing left and our students, parents, and staff members are left to pick up the pieces. It's not fair to any of us. It's time for this board to step up to the plate, start working together as a team.
Ms. Poles, thank you very much. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Comment. Excuse me, ma'am. Could you put that little block up? I can't really see the colors. I think, yes, thank you. Or you could just set it right here on the stage, maybe, so we don't have to worry about it. Just so I can see the colors so I'm gonna be aware. Thank you. Oh, careful. That's good. Awesome. Thank you.
Hello. This is Hannah Fallon. I'm a King George Middle School teacher. And I feel like I am kind of maybe the lone voice of dissension. And I hope that it does not make people hate me. I'm just a person. So I sent an email on the second, sorry, on the fourth, thanking Dr. Benson and the members of the board for the decision that they made. And I feel like it was a necessary decision based on the news and things that were coming out. And I've said it before and I'll say it again, I personally know a man who picked up COVID at his workplace and unknowingly infected a large number of people, including his father, who was in his late 50s, early 60s. Unfortunately, his father passed away and the son is consumed with guilt. And turn that around and let's think of a student picked up and spread to somebody that they loved, how devastating that would be and what that would do to their emotional well-being. And so also, on November 2nd, there was an NBC article that stated more than 61,000 children in the U.S. were diagnosed with COVID the previous week, more than any other week during the pandemic. And the American Academy of Pediatrics and Children's Hospital Association reported on that on Monday, November 2nd, that eight and all 853,635 children have been diagnosed with the virus this year, representing 11.1% of all U.S. cases. And so as students have returned to school, the number of cases has risen dramatically. So right now, I think our low number in King George is just a reflection of how well we have done as a county protecting our county members and our students. Moving forward, I'd like to reiterate the point that I previously made to you. We can see that the majority of our students are thriving with virtual instruction. Is it ideal? No. Is it what we would choose in any other circumstance other than a pandemic or extreme crisis? No. But be that as it may, it is working for us in these present times and conditions. We're choosing to protect our students and their families. And if life isn't the number one priority here, I just don't know what could be a higher priority other than staying alive. However, we can see that there are students that virtual instruction is not at all working for. Many of these students have extreme family drama to contend with, are homeless, are on the brink of homelessness, have IEPs or 504s, or lack the attention span or working memory to handle learning in a virtual environment without extreme supports, live with several younger siblings they're responsible for, have spotty or internet issues, or maybe lacking basic instructional supplies or nutrition. I think the school system should look at the data from the quarter one, set a rubric to see who would qualify and have schools suggest who would benefit the most from having school employees supervise instruction. And hopefully, the county could find enough people who would be interested in supervising these students and setting up either like an internet cafe setting where students could be distant.
Thank you, Ms. Fallon. Thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Hi there. This is Elise Fritz. I'm from KGMS, seventh grade teacher here. And I kind of wanna, you know, tab on to Hannah Fallon's point. I do wanna thank the board for their service. I can't even begin to imagine how difficult your job has been this year and I do not envy you by any measure. I just wanna speak about my experience. This has been, in my seven years in education, this has been the most mentally demanding of my years. But I still stand by the board's decision to keep learning remote until January. Of course, we know cases are on the rise, especially when precautions have not been followed. King George has stayed safe and, you know, or pardon me, Virginia stayed safe and by extension, King George, because we have been following these guidelines. You know, viruses mutate with each person that they infect. So this is an ever-changing, ever-evolving situation. And I know that we're all sick of hearing that this is, you know, an unprecedented situation. But so was the depression. And it is going to change all of us, all of our kids, all of the adults, you know? But we can find some solace in that we're in this together, you know? And as we near the holiday season, you know, the colder weather is going to drive more people indoors, which could really affect, you know, how many outbreaks we have. And, you know, that makes me concerned. And I did wanna mention that, you know, teachers are trying their hardest, looking for ways to engage their students, thinking of group projects. Somebody on my team is trying to do a flip grid where kids take videos and post. So I just, I wanna put it out there that we are trying our hardest. And I do think that staying indoors for now, you know, remotely is the safest option.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Richard and I am a resident of King George County. I first want to thank Ms. Hawk, Ms. Gonzalez, and Ms. Tolliver for making the decision to remain 100% virtual until the second semester. I think that this allows the division staff times to get things in place for a safer turn to learn for King George County Schools. As we've heard in previous meetings, in King George County Schools is having difficulty filling many positions. And one of the most critical is the position of substitute teachers. Prior to COVID-19, finding willing and able substitutes was an issue. And I know that many times our special classes at the elementary school were doubled because substitutes were unavailable to cover classes. This is not something that can happen with COVID-19 guidelines in place. And finding substitute teachers now that we're dealing with COVID-19 seems to be proving more difficult than before. If we do not have an adequate number of substitutes, then no plan will be able to be successful for returning everyone to schools. And the same will hold true of bus drivers and substitute bus drivers. It should also be considered that many of our staff have felt overwhelmed with the workload prior to virtual instruction. And now many staff members are being attacked by parents for wanting a safe plan for returning to the buildings. Some are being harassed for being vocal about wanting a safe plan. And others are concerned about retribution for speaking out publicly and sharing their concerns. Staff members are contemplating how they're going to be able to do even more for our students if a push is made to teach virtually and in person simultaneously. I hope the King George County Schools will look for ways to improve the morale among the staff. At this difficult time, it's important for the board and the community to show the teachers who are working night and day to provide instruction that they are indeed valued. And as for the cleaning and sanitizing of our schools, I was saddened to hear the report last week from the cleaning company about the state of our schools, but I wasn't surprised. In fact, many teachers had reached out with concerns about cleaning and sanitizing in the buildings when we first started thinking about reopening. While it was unfortunate to hear that it was not being done correctly, it was hopeful to hear that just a few changes, we can have a cleaner and safer experience for everyone involved. I hope that the current staff will put that information to use immediately. And finally, I hope moving forward, the board will work together to make the plan that is safe for students and staff and allows our resources to be utilized in the best manner possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Matthew McKinley. I live on Mamie's Place in King George. I've been listening to a lot of the public speaking about wanting to go back to school. I've listened to some of the teachers speaking about needing to have more of a safe environment. I tend to agree with the safe environment. I think if we can develop a plan to go back to school, whether it's K-12, whether it's plus, at-risk or special needs, the plan needs to be safe. We're in the middle of a global pandemic right now. These are extraordinary times and the numbers are rising to, right now, we're getting close to twice what the previous peak was in July. It's not a safe environment out there right now because we are obviously not doing what it takes to stem the spread of this pandemic. So what we need to do is we need to make sure that if there's a plan to go back, excuse me, if there's a plan for us all to go back, it needs to be safe. And it needs to make sure that we don't spread this virus any further. The second thing is also, I would like to point out that the virtual is working for some people. I've talked to my girls. One is on board. One is actually thriving with it. And actually, she said to me, she took two months in order to get used to how this works. And she doesn't wanna go and change and have to do it all over again with a different virtual session. So I would ask for two things. One, that if we come up with a plan, whoever is going to be going back, it needs to be a safe plan that is compatible with this pandemic. And two, that we maintain the virtual option as it is right now, that our kids have already adjusted to. Not make them change any further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amber Kents. I'm speaking in place of my husband, William. I'm a resident of King George County and a stepparent to a freshman at KGHS. Thank you, Ms. Hawk, Ms. Gonzalez, and Ms. Tolliver for voting to prevent an incomplete and not-ready plan from commencing last week. I greatly appreciate your courage in making those votes. I continuously hear parents battering the school board about sending the students back now, right this minute, regardless of whether or not there's a real plan. I listen to parents complain every week about how hard it is for them to help their children learn. As a parent, we all sign up to be a teacher to our children. We are responsible for getting our children ready for kindergarten. Teaching them colors, teaching them how to write their name, this is all on us. Virtual learning is no more of a one-size-fits-all model than in-person instruction. I believe that the recent numbers show that part of the reason that King George County has had low numbers is because we haven't had students in person since March. I believe that the board should bring a representative of the Rappahannock Health District to address the board, and if necessary, in addition to that representative, an epidemiologist to address questions of what is safe and ensure that any plan that the board creates will follow recommended guidelines. I think that many parents and students aren't understanding that in-person instruction will not look like it did in March, before March 2020. Masks, desks, shields, and physical distancing will be necessary. Students will not be able to interact the way they did in the past. This is apparently news to many parents who comment in the KGES Parent and Teacher Forum on Facebook. We need a plan. The plan for November 5th wasn't a plan. The schools haven't been cleaned and the filtration system isn't ready. We need to have a plan that everyone, parents and staff, are on board with. And that plan needs to be 100% in place prior to returning to in-person instruction. I'm not opposed to students returning to school. But I am opposed to students returning to school without taking the proper precautions. Not mitigations, precautions. We've had many situations in the past, like the 1918 Spanish Flu, the Great Depression, World War I, and World War II. The COVID-19 pandemic is another situation where we all have the opportunity The COVID-19 pandemic is another situation where we all have the opportunity to define ourselves like those generations did. What will be your greatest hour? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Teresa Lumsford. I live at 631B Hall Road. I believe that when this was discussed a few weeks ago, like three meetings ago, it was said that the board would meet weekly for discussion until a safe plan could be put in place and executed, not meet one time, weekly. I think it was premature to make motions each week just because something sounded promising or because parents are sending out petitions to have members removed. I don't agree with a lot of what's happened on either side. I feel that you all have wasted, have waited too long. Now it's bit you in the butt, so you're rushing motions to make parents happy. No, I do not believe that kids should go back without a well-executed plan. Kids had struggles at the start of the school year, and with the help of their teachers, they have succeeded. I've heard about kids suffering and failing, yet no one was worried about this when they were in school. And I was only curious if you'd actually looked and compared between last year and this year. My son, who is in the Army, is now transferring here to the East Coast. When asked where he was going during his leave, he gave them our zip code and was told that this area is a hotspot, was given the do's and don'ts to avoid COVID. Well, best as he could anyways. My niece attends Virginia Tech. Then they re, when they leave for, what is it called, Thanksgiving break, they will be virtual until school returns at the end of this, for the remainder of the semester. And this is to reduce the spread of COVID between families and their town, to keep people safe. The numbers are already going up. They will continue to go up. And when the flu hits, it's going to be a mess. And I'm going to keep it at that. I mean, you have all received plenty of emails from me. I, as much as I don't agree with a lot of what's been going on, I still do support you. And I do hope that you consider the children and not just all the threats from the parents. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. No, I don't believe so. Mr. Vance, could you please move the names down to see if we have any more? This is the last one coming up? Okay. Is that? I, I think they are. We're giving just a few more minutes. I think it's Mr., well, it could be a girl, Bobby Phipps. Mr. Vance, is it Bobby Phipps? No, he didn't speak. Yeah, we had a Melissa Phipps. She's here. Yeah. No, he has not spoke, sir, Mr. Collins. I had him on the list to speak, but he was, he could not get on, and we skipped to Matthew McKinley. Okay, so you, do you have a Mr. McKinley? All right, hold on. Mr. Vance? Could you please let Mr. Phipps know that we're going to have to move on? Can you please acknowledge Mr. Vance? Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you, everybody, for your public comment. We're going to move on. Yeah, yes.
So, again, last, last meeting, November 2nd, we had a motion. And the motion was to not return to school till it's safe. So tonight, I know it might not be popular amongst the board members or the public, but I'm going to make a motion that we return to school five days a week for those folks who want to do in person and continue virtual for those who want to continue virtual.
Do I have a second? There's no second. The motion does not carry. So can we move on to number six on our agenda for changes to the agenda?
No changes, Ben.
I would actually like to make a change to the agenda. I would like to remove agenda formats from the action items. Have that come back at another date. Discussion on the agenda items? So, or the format, I mean. Well, so the reason that I want to take it off is because in looking at the committee for the parliamentary procedures or bylaws, I think that there might be some additional alterations or edits that we'd like to propose for the agenda format. So that's why I'd like to take it off for now. Oh, yes, absolutely. So it will be merged in with the discussion item for the, whatever the committee report comes on.
The motion is to table that for this evening.
Yes, correct. The motion is to table that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next, we have the 2020 Advisory Committees. Do I have a motion to approve all of the committees as listed?
Make a motion to approve the 2020 Advisory Committees as posted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The 2020 Advisory Committees are approved. Next on the action items is the air quality enhancement. Dr. Benson, do you have information for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Colburn is here from Honeywell. She, again, she's with us for those who weren't here last meeting. She came from Honeywell, and we do a lot of our, partner with Honeywell as far as our HVAC systems. Anyway, she has returned after a long drive from Rattler. We appreciate her coming back and following up on the discussion that we had last, last week.
He has my PowerPoint from last week in case we have any questions. But we do have some figures for you. Okay, real quick, we'll just go through this. Should I go through the three different options and tell you more about this? Do you need to know more about bipolar ionization? Do you understand how it works? I mean, I'm here to answer any questions.
How much does it cost?
Okay.
I think the numbers are important.
And, you know, I'll be wrong. I was wrong last week. $6.50 was not enough. They forgot the preschool when they looked at the list. And you can string me up, but the price of the equipment itself has gone up, just like plywood in a hurricane. But if you scroll forward, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. But for your crowd here tonight, know that I'm trying to get the school kids back to school as safe as possible, and also your school board members with needlepoint bipolar ionization. So keep going. It does not, it is not a silver bullet. I will say that again. However, it has been proven to reduce COVID by 90%. It does rate ashray medications, both for ozone, lack of ozone, and for indoor air. Honeywell also continually tries to make sure that your indoor air quality is as best as it possibly can be based on your design. But needlepoint bipolar ionization will not only help isolate the COVID germ, it will also help with other viruses. It also will save energy in the long run. It helps with mold. It helps with spores. It helps with lots of things to make your indoor air quality cleaner. Okay, the preschool number is wrong. I was on a call five minutes before I left, and they had 124 units. So they had it at 140,000. So I just guessed, but the real number is, hold on, it's 44. Preschool is 43082. Okay? The reason the elementary schools are so high is because there are so many individual units in those schools. Each room has a unit. So therefore, our partners and ourselves will have to go to each and every unit and open it up and weld the bipolar ionization into each unit. The middle school is so inexpensive in comparison because they have large rooftop units on top. So while the ionizers are more expensive because they're larger, it only takes the labor less time to put them in. Does that make sense? In comparison to the CFM that's put out of that piece of equipment. And the high school, as you can tell, but obviously, the size of the high school is $190,000. So the total was 741, 182, 59. Now, that's with the 60, and it's going to be less. It's a 43082. But I didn't get that number till 620, and they had it up there. So this will be all be done before December 30th, if you were to make a motion and have it approved by Thursday. Let me tell you, this is the hottest item out there. Gloucester Schools just moved forward with theirs last week. It's almost a million dollars worth. Little Sex went with theirs. We're installing King Queens. Our phones are ringing up the hook. We're taking no more because we cannot, obviously with King George, with yours, we want to make sure that it's completely finished by December the 30th. Now, if you choose to just take due portions of it and do more maybe next semester, we can obviously look at that too, but this is the price to do this all right now.
I'm sorry. Ms. Colburn, would you repeat the total?
Oh, I'm sorry. You can't even see it. I'm sorry. Should I go through each school for you? The preschool is 43082. I'm sorry. I thought you all could see that. I'll tell you each one.
That's okay. I have it. Thank you.
Yeah, now, okay. You know, King George, just so you know, King George Elementary is only 64, but Sealsen is 166. It just tells you the difference with the labor of having to go to every unit and install them. Like I said before, we do think that we can get all of this work done or a portion of this work done, whatever you would like for us to do. Dr. Benson asked us to break it up in this way. We did try to look to do classrooms versus auxiliary spaces. It was just too difficult in the timeframe we had to figure out and then where the air was located. So this is how we broke it out.
So last week, it was $650,000. And that was the top, 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 top.
I was wrong.
That was the top.
I was wrong.
And now it's 741.
It is. They look, they did the estimate without, they did the estimate based on the equipment list. And the preschool school board office is not taken care of by Honeywell. It is my fault.
We don't even have any specs, and you're $741,000. We don't even know what we get for something.
Oh, yes, I have a whole specification. I do.
I haven't seen them.
I'll be happy to share. We just, we have that. We'll be happy to share that with you of how many units, when they'll be installed, the whole proposal.
I'm not comfortable making a motion or, or voting yea for a motion for $741,000, and I don't know what I'm getting, number one. And number two, I don't know where $741,000 is going to come from.
Okay.
So.
Like I said, I'm sorry that the $650 number, we were told, kind of at the last minute, to kind of come up with a number as fast as we could, and we did. And we didn't, we came out since then, last Monday, and they went through every unit, and they checked the CFM and figured out how many ionizers we would need to put into each unit. And so therefore, we went back with our partners, and it's a busy time of the year. And this is always a salesperson's worst nightmare, is to have to come back with a higher number.
Joyce, it's not that I'm against it. I'm not against the product.
It's a, it is a lot of money.
Right. I'm, I'm the one that brought this forth.
Oh, okay.
So I'm for the product, but, you know, we're not, we're not opening schools, $741,000 without specifics to vote tonight.
Oh, no, I wouldn't.
And the part that bothered me last time, that you want us to pay your people overtime. I'm, you know, that doesn't sit right with me. It seems like that your, that schools are becoming a cash cow for cares. And, and so it's not that I'm against this because this is, the ionization is, is a good idea. But we can't just run down this railroad track like this and just say, just to spend money and do what happens.
Right. I know that a lot of my customers went for the grant to do this, and then they didn't get what they expected. And then the latest cares funds were through the counties, and then a lot of them had some leftover and offered to their schools with this December 30th deadline. No, we would much prefer to do it with a longer timeframe. And we probably, you know, could obviously reduce that. We can't change the price of the equipment, and right now, it is, it's plywood in a, with a hurricane coming, the price of the ionizers themselves.
I have no idea when King George County schools are going to open. And so I make a motion that we table this action item until we get specifics on the contract and determine where a funding source will come from.
Can I bring up one point before you all entertain motions?
Just the motion on the table. Is there a second or not?
So let's, let's go in. I was going to say, if we could go into a second motion, then we can discuss it since the motion is already on the table, and then we can go from there. Does anybody want to second the motion so we can go for discussion? Okay, I'll second the motion so we can go for discussion. Okay, now, Dr. Benson, could you please?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate for our public, because I think where we're up here, last time we met, I gave you an overview of the different revenue sources associated with COVID. The particular source of revenue, the $777,000 that was awarded to King George, was just recently appropriated to King George. And it came with it, and then again, this is for our public, it came with it a spending and a receipt deadline of the end of the calendar year. In other words, we have to procure with that funding what we are going to procure, and whatever we procure must be secured in the county, in the schools, by December, the end of December. And so you see very quickly that that's a very, very tight timeline when we're talking about $777,000. I don't know why that's the case, but that, those are the rules that have been told to us that we must have in place what we use this funding for. With that said, then I turn quickly to our friends at Honeywell here for just a ballpark figure. So I just, I understand, and I too was disappointed. I know Joyce was disappointed when the estimate came in as it came in. But please understand that we very quickly needed just a ballpark figure to discuss this. She went back within a week to, and they came out, visited, I know, visited all of our schools, walked our schools to get a very accurate count of the number of units we have to then calculate their costs. And I understand the environment, that everybody, the high demand, the economic aspect of this in terms of high demand and limited supply. But we're in, we're in a very unique position in that we certainly, if we had time, we would vet this, we would, you know, this may even go to a more lengthy procurement process. But unfortunately, we're penned in, and it's a little frustrating to be penned in with a timeline to spend money, taxpayer money, in such a short amount of time. And again, I don't know why that is. That's a federal regulation that came with this money, but it is what it is. That's a federal regulation that came with this money, but it is what it is. We need to then make a decision, I guess. And I do see the benefit of this, obvious this product. I see that not just the benefit in current times, but I know that in the long run, the product helps to mitigate the just general influenza virus in our schools, and it would provide a return on investment for years to come. That said, I understand it's very unusual. I apologize. I wish I could change it so that we had a longer time to consider this, we had more time to get you the specifications, everything that Honeywell can provide.
So is, is it possible that we could possibly, sorry about that, take out, say, the large rooms, the auditoriums, the gymnasiums, the cafeterias? Also, and I don't know if this is up for discussion, I'm not sure in saying this that I'm in agreement with it, but removing some of the offices at the preschool?
We have none of the offices.
So the 60,000 is just?
That was the problem. That was just, as you walk in to the left, it's just the bard units, I have a count, the bard units, the rooftop units that serve those children. It's not for Dr. Benson and his staff.
Okay, so I understand that you're not able to take all of that out because of time limits, but is that something that we could?
We can certainly do that. We have to place, make a commitment and place order this week if we're going to do any of it.
So.
Unfortunately. We could certainly take that out, do our best, but it's very difficult to take out because of the way your situation, I mean, obviously here, there's probably a large rooftop unit. We could certainly take that out.
Correct.
To go through each space, it's just a time, a time problem. We can't wait another week till next Monday to come back and do this again, or we just can't get the work done and the product ordered.
I understand that.
So, I mean, if you want us to negotiate and work with Dr. Benson to do that, we'll do whatever we can to help you. I wish we had had more time from the very get-go. Like he was so eloquently said, he called and asked me to come, and I gave the equipment list to an estimator, and the preschool isn't on that list. You're internally, you take care of that space yourself. So I didn't have those specifications. So now, I sent a guy out, guys, to walk all the schools, and that's what it came up with.
Right. So does anybody else have a question? Ms. Tyler, go ahead.
Dr. Benson, you?
Yes, you're on.
There were several different funding streams. So this, this could be paid for about the $777,000 that's got to be spent and procured and secured by December 30th, and then possibly some of the other items that we were looking at could come out of other funding streams or even our own regular operating budget. Is that correct, what you told us last week? Well, I added in the part about paying for the entire thing, but.
Yeah, not entirely correct, because our CRF funding right now, we have 359,000 of that 777 unencumbered. So we could certainly engage in a phase of this, so to speak, and we could then look, as you've mentioned, we could look inward at our operating budget. There might be ways to reprioritize, look at positions that we purposely not filled during this time to try to repurpose that funding towards this. I'd have to go back and look.
So I'm trying to pull up that funding source that we looked at last week.
So we've already encumbered money for the employees' childcare. One of the big things, CDC is talking about cleaning. We won't have the $89,000 to get that under control or the testing. Throw it all towards this.
I would only.
So, you know, we sat here and listened to the folks online, and we listened to the folks that were here, and they, they kept talking about the bad management of the school board, that we're not managing well, and yet, yet again, we have now seen another light on this, that we're going to, we're going to accept $741,000 without knowing anything of what we're getting.
We know what we're getting.
Do you know what we're getting?
I know, and also what I need to know.
Please tell me what we're getting.
We're getting an ionization system.
Filtration system on all of our air handling units that will not only mitigate COVID virus, but other germs.
But, but, but then we hear we're not, it's incomplete. So the employees of the school board office don't get it.
Well, they maybe can get it phased in later.
Oh, well, I just literally left them off because of the number. I mean, there were the bard units, and I was told the students were obviously the highest priority.
Okay, so I'm still confused. Are you saying that you can, could not remove the large rooms for the high school and middle school?
We possibly could, yes. We could possibly take this number and remove that and work with Dr. Benson this week to do that, certainly, to reduce that number.
Okay, so is there, is there any way that we could be comfortable enough that we could make a motion, that we could say we would accept the ionization minus those rooms, and then give Dr. Benson the authority to be able to approve that bottom number?
Absolutely.
Is that possible?
So the motion's on the table, not?
I know the motion's on the table, but we're under discussion.
Okay.
So do.
People do whatever you want.
I can't change your motion. You're right. You're absolutely right, but we're still in discussion.
So Madam Chair, so I would, I would counter with a different approach. I personally do not see the benefit of trying to remove the additional rooms. I think long-term, if this is something we're going to do, it makes sense to do properly and in full, but I believe Joyce, and I apologize for my last name.
Oh, it's Coleborne.
Coleborne.
It's okay. Joyce is fine.
Um, I, I think I heard you say that you would need to know by this Thursday.
Well, this week, because we have to order these and get everybody.
Understood. So I also, I agree with Mr. Collins about not prematurely voting on something by which we don't have a lot of the details, but so I think it will be possible for the board to meet later this week, and we could review, and beforehand, we could review the proposals so that we had all the information that we need. It would give Dr. Benson time to evaluate the funding sources and come up with what makes the most sense from an economical standpoint, and we could then vote accordingly.
So I believe we have to have three days. So Ms. Bushrod, so if we, we will not be able, the earliest we can actually have a meeting would be Friday. Is that correct?
So today's Monday.
Right, so we post it tomorrow. So would it be Thursday or would it be Friday?
Friday.
Friday.
That's too late.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be okay. I mean, whatever you want us to do. I mean, we want to do the best for you. We would like to order them on Friday. That was what our plan would be, but we'll, you know, I can go back and say, will this work? We hate for you not to get it by, for one day, but we'll be happy to look at it, take out the large equipment, but we can also do that with Dr. Benson. And I could be happy to send you each the proposal to read.
Can you send it to you?
I can send that to you tonight. I can go send that to you right now. I mean, I can get a line. I mean, it just basically says the number of ionizations, the different sizes, based on the rooms, the number of them per building, the labor. It's a turnkey project, so every, every air handling unit, every unit in the district where students are, it's not the right side of the school board office, will have, as you so eloquently said, have ionization in each air handling unit and space.
So to be totally crazy, could we not post this evening that we wanted to have a meeting on Thursday so Joyce could get things ordered on Friday? Is that totally out of the realm of possibility?
It is impossible, or it's possible?
So we can post tonight, then we want to have a meeting and have that meeting on Thursday? Ms. Bushrod?
That's preferable than Friday.
I can't do Thursday.
Would you be able to do it virtually?
I can be available by telephone, but I'll be out of state.
Okay. So Joyce, you said we could make that decision on Friday for you.
Well, you know, as soon as possible. I mean, really, as soon as possible. So you can tell me exactly what you want us to do. You want me to take out all the large spaces?
Just itemize them out. Okay? So I think you need to itemize them out, because I think the other thing that we need to do is we need to look at the CARES Act money a little bit more, because that pretty much takes out everything that we have left and leaves us with next to nothing. And I think that we just need to make sure. And Ms. Gonzalez, I agree with you that it's not a bad idea to have it for the entire school, but I think if it's something that we can phase in, because I don't foresee us seeing those large rooms being used this year.
So you're saying cafeterias?
Cafeterias.
Auditoriums.
Auditoriums, gymnasiums, yeah. I don't think, yeah, they are being used, like we're using it right now, but I don't believe it's being used at the capacity that, you know. So you guys have to, have to realize, if I'm speaking up here, if I had COVID by the time, it takes time to get into that return system, they get ionized, and they get put back in.
No, 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 that's not how ionize. No, the ionization comes down from the unit.
Right.
And it's in the room. So it's not like the UV. That's the great part about it, is the fact that the UV is when the air has to circulate and go through the lights. No, the ionizers come all the time from there and come down to the surfaces and attach themselves.
Okay.
Positive and negative, based on the positive and negative charges. So that's why we think it's a better solution, because of the circulation of the air takes so long to go past the UV lighting.
Correct.
So it's a little different.
Okay.
What's the maintenance cost?
They're not using it at that capacity.
There is no maintenance on them. They are self-cleaning. Maybe once a year, you take a little alcohol and run across the teeth of the larger units. It's very simple. They have a 10 to 12-year lifespan, and they have a power source. They don't have any moving parts, nothing that moves. They do come with a year warranty.
Thank you. I appreciate the sales.
No, I'm just answering a question.
So Mr. Collins, would you like to, would you, would you like to change your motion?
No, ma'am, I wouldn't.
Okay, so could you repeat your motion?
You can vote on it, and you can have another motion if you want.
Okay, could you, all right, just to repeat your motion, please?
We, we don't approve this action item to spend $741,182.59.
Okay. So the motion's been seconded. We've discussed it. We can vote on it now. All in favor? All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Chair votes nay. Motion carries. Does not carry. Sorry, motion does not carry. Okay, do I have another motion on the table?
What is, that we're going to meet again?
So that we will table this, so there's, yeah, put a motion on the table that we will table it until the next meeting, and we will have the meeting scheduled for Friday.
Can we meet earlier than 6:00?
We can discuss that later. Let's just have the motion.
I don't understand why we can't meet Thursday.
Because we have two board members that will not be able to attend in person. One won't be able to attend at all, and one can only attend virtually.
But I can attend virtual.
So the one that's in opposition, because this is an emergency meeting and I can't attend, so I get knocked out of it. I don't think that's really fair.
Yeah, I don't agree with that. So I think we, and since Joyce has said that she's okay if we meet Friday, if we can meet possibly a little bit earlier on Friday, then I think that'll give them a little bit more time. I mean, I think we are committed to doing something pretty substantial. Just the exact details of that, I think, need to be worked out a little bit more. So I think that that gives us a placeholder within your organization. So I don't think that we're in danger if we wait that one day, which you had said earlier.
Right. As long as we would have a commitment that day.
Yes, yes. So I think we can have a commitment that day.
It's just for ordering and.
And placeholder for labor and everything else.
Are we, I'm confused. Are we still in, we've tabled that motion.
That motion's been tabled.
In discussion about the item, which is the ionization item.
I'm just asking for a motion that we table this action item and that we reconvene on Friday so that we can vote on it based on the information that we've just discussed that Joyce will bring to us.
And I will send you, I will send you the proposal. I'll send you any information you'd like about the ionizers, and then we will take out and show you what the deduct would be if we took out the large spaces.
So I think if you just work directly with Dr. Benson, and Dr. Benson will end up giving that, all of our, all the information to us, once he works out the details, that he may understand a little bit better than we do.
And Mr. Collins, you can't be available at all? Not even by?
No, I'll be, I'll be in a situation where I'm taking a state board test, where you can't even have a phone in there, you can't have any, it's a private bag, and the.
So that's, that's okay, Mr. Collins. You don't, you don't have to give us an excuse. I think it's clear that one day isn't going to hurt anything, that we can do that. So, here again, do I have a motion?
So I move that we table the action item, see air quality enhancements until Friday?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion's unanimous, carried. We will have another meeting on Friday to discuss the air enhancement.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure.
So we're going to do dinner after that one, right, Joyce?
Friday.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we're going to move on to discussion items. We have the VSBA legislative positions. Ms. Gonzalez, did you want to go ahead and brief us with that?
Certainly, thank you. Madam Chair, fellow board members, as you know, the VSBA delegate assembly is typically held during the annual convention in Williamsburg. However, this year, since the convention will be held virtually, the delegate assembly is being held virtually next Monday afternoon, November 16th. So you should have received the 2020 VSBA delegate assembly handbook electronically in addition to the paper copies of this year's legislative proposals provided as a courtesy this evening. So as the King George County School Board delegate this year, I welcome any feedback and discussion you may have with regards to the proposed additions and amendments. And if there are no concerns with the proposals as presented, I will vote on behalf of the board in favor of the positions on Monday.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Gonzalez? Or want to bring up any points? Mr. Collins?
Let's say position number one, behavioral interventionist support person up. That's, that would be an unfunded mandate. It would cause hardship on the local school division to pay for that. And proposal number four, where it talks about volunteers, they want to amend so that they can promote volunteerism and reward and retain volunteers. But down in that, it talks about convicted felons. It wants the, the attempt is to allow convicted felons to be able to be volunteers in schools. So I'm not, I'm against that one, one and four.
I'm in favor of one, but I agree with you on four.
I'm also in favor of one, because we currently have behavioral interventionists as support positions, certainly with our special education system. And frankly, the number of school counselors who are available, who are needed more than ever now, is diminishing.
You're right. But if they want to put it in the SOQ as well, that was my only thing. Yes, they're needed, but it's another unfunded mandate. If once, if the state agrees to that, it just doesn't have any backup where there's funding attached to that resolution. That's all.
But it says the VSBA supports the addition of behavioral interventions as an SOQ position.
There's funding attached with SOQ.
That's all. That's my only point.
I'm still in favor of that, but, but I agree with you on, on the fourth issue, because it's not, although it does clearly say those who have a felony conviction but who have fulfilled their legal commitment, I still think there needs to be probably further screening to that.
I agree.
Definitely the, it needs to be identified what the felony conviction is.
As it's presented in the amendments, that's all. It's not, doesn't give any more information than the amendments that we have. So I would, I would, I would caution that we jump on board with that.
Vote against number four?
Yes.
So, okay, I guess, so the only thing I would say, and this is not, I'm not saying in favor or in opposition to, but just the, sort of the highlight that the rationale for legislative proposal number four, on the considering applicants on a case-by-case basis who have a felony conviction but have otherwise fulfilled their legal commitment to society, the rationale for that is proposed by Lynchburg City was, was specifically looking at addressing the inequity between the, so like the saying, the United States has 5% of the world population, and yet approximately 25% of its prisoners. More than 60% of the people in prison are people of color. For males in their 20s, one in every eight is in prison or jail on any given day. The inequity is a problem being actively discussed in our country now, but many school districts continue to perpetuate this problem by denying individuals with a history of felony conviction the option to apply as volunteers in schools. felony conviction the option to apply as volunteers in schools. So to address that, the Lynchburg City School Board has enacted a formula, a formal process to screen applicants with felony convictions that excludes individuals who've had a history of crimes against children or violent crimes with final determination made by the superintendent. Anyway, they're doing, in doing so to recognize that the safety of children in our schools is obviously the primary responsibility of the board, but to at the same time try to address inequities in the, in the country otherwise. So I offer that for consideration.
I don't think that the schools that addressed inequity to allow felons in the school is, is, is a choice. So then you start talking about which ones, of course it says one crimes against children, but do you want, do you want someone that has had a history, not once, maybe twice, of some serious crimes? So if you, if you do your time for murder and you paid your debt to society, do you want someone in the school who has committed murder? I would say no.
So I think on a case-by-case basis, you could rule them, you could make the determination to not allow murderers as a specific example. But anyway, that being said, to narrow it down, so it sounds like, so the issues, the ones for discussion were proposals one and four. So at a minimum here, we're in agreement with the other four. So proposals two, three, five, and six, we are in agreement, we can vote in favor of those. Is that correct?
Do you need consensus for number one?
Well, I was gonna get to those, so, so two, three, five, and six, we are good with. So, so the first one, so the behavioral interventionist support positions, I guess, to focus on that one, it sounded like Mr. Collins was not in favor of that, and the only one?
I believe so.
Was a favorite, was a favorite.
In favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Okay, so, so I'm in favor of it, so is that, is that...
Count's majority.
Okay. All right, so we'll vote in support of number one, and then that leaves the fourth proposal that we were just discussing about the convicted felons, or those with felony convictions volunteering in schools. So do we want to vote on that, or just go back down the board? Who is not, who is and is not in favor of that?
I think you have a general consensus that we're all not in favor. I'm the only one that didn't voice my opinion, so I'm not in favor of it as well.
Okay, so I will vote nay on that one. Okay, so all in favor and vote nay on number four? Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Certainly.
Madam Chair, can I ask just a favor of Ms. Gonzalez? I know that our organization as well, you know, supports not having unfunded mandates, because it puts an additional stress on local budgets and local and county, or county boards and town councils in particular. I would just, if there, if there's discussion regarding that number one, that we'd be emphatic, that it be attached, that there be funding attached to that. And I think that's really what the issue that's being raised, is that currently there's no funding, yet school divisions like ours and across the Commonwealth are carving out from their local, from their budgets to support these positions. I think what it's advocating is that there be funding placed at the state level into local school divisions to support the positions that really, in many cases, have already been created, but are already unfunded mandates. So I agree with Mr. Collins wholeheartedly, you know, we cannot harbor any more unfunded mandates, this may be one that if, if your organization supports and lobbies for, that we just make sure that there is funding attached to it.
And you can say...
Okay, right, I'll comment accordingly, understood. Do you, Dr. Benson, do you have any comments on any of the others?
I do not.
Okay.
It's your organization.
Okay, thank you. Awesome.
Okay, are we done? Any more? All right, we're gonna move on to item number nine, information items. We have committee reports. Ms. Gonzalez, do you have any committee reports?
I do not.
Ms. Hall, um, Halliver?
I do not.
Ms. Hawk?
I do not.
And...
Collins.
Mr. Collins. Okay, I do have one, we had a C T E committee. Jasmine Coleman did a wonderful presentation on a trade school boot camp, it's very informative. All the teachers have done an amazing job being creative to make virtual learning productive. There are just a couple things that I wanted to highlight with the career and technical student organizations. DECA was here tonight, most of them, you know, they had mentioned some of their fundraisers that they were doing. They also currently have 130 members and their goal is 150. I believe they have a fundraiser on Wednesday? Is that their 5K race?
Yes.
Yes. They also are doing Thanksgiving and Christmas drive. All of this is available on the website. We have the Future Farmers of America doing poinsettias. And then the Health Occupation Students of America, of course, we just went through their international winners tonight, which was amazing, that's great. Skills USA is setting up virtual skills. The N J R T C has 126 candidates, which I believe that's about a 15 or 16% increase from last year. And they do get together on Wednesdays and do their normal workout. We also have, the Future Business Leaders of America are hoping for more participation if we get back to school. So they are obviously looking to get, to get back to school as soon as possible to be able to collaborate. Also, there's just one little section in here that I just want to read that kind of talks a little bit about the Virtual Vision A C T, the career and tech, so it's really short. "The Virtual Vision A C T is excited to offer Career Tech Virtual Vision 2020 on a dynamic virtual platform, bringing you hundreds of sessions in a mixture of live-streamed, semi-live, and on-demand formats, all of which you will be able to access post-event. This is happening November 30th through December 4th. Virtual Vision will offer immersive and expanded programming that addresses cutting-edge C T E issues during these unprecedented times. The University of Virginia's Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service, in collaboration with the department, has researched the compiled, and compiled this data for the 2021 school year. The information is based on occupational employment statistics and educational attainment data produced by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, as well as longitudinal wage data produced by the State Council of Higher Education for Virginia. This information reflects median annual wages for graduates of various educational programs within the Virginia and high-wage occupations throughout the state. It also outlines typical entry-level educational requirements, entry-level work experience, and on-the-job training for each of these occupations." So as usual, our C T E committee is, or C T E teachers, Ms. Trusslow and Ms. Hill are working very hard and I am very proud of them. Good job, guys. So it's the only key report. Moving on, we have the Superintendent's Advisory Group update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and as promised last meeting, I've brought to you a typed page synopsis really, and these, I want to stress, we will post these for the public as a handout here at the board meeting. But these are my notes essentially from a meeting held Wednesday. But before I get into my notes, I first want to thank more than 50 of our staff, our family members, who have, and family members who have agreed to serve on the Superintendent's Advisory Committee to revisit and to, to carry forward in many respects, but then to extend our current planning as far as a re-entry of students to in-person and face-to-face instruction beginning next semester. This group of more than 50 folks is divided across 13 different committees, and you'll see a heading for each of the committees. I'm not gonna read the document to you necessarily, and again, it'll be posted at our board website. But I do want to highlight a few of the conversations, just to give you a taste of what these committees are doing, so that you have an understanding of what's coming to you, in some parts perhaps sooner, and in other parts in a more summative fashion. First, we've got, we've got scheduling groups at each level, at high, middle, and elementary, and we have a preschool group that are in discussions. I want to relay to you that our high school and our middle school scheduling group are working, at times they've had independent discussions, but at other times they're working collaboratively, given they do have some of the common variables that they need to, to consider as they, as they creatively discuss possible options for reopening to maximize what we can in terms of in-person learning time for students. They're also, and I'm excited to say this, they're also looking at the feasibility at trying to engage perhaps even sooner than second semester, some of our students who are, who are struggling quite frankly, and some of our students whose needs simply aren't, aren't, we aren't able to accommodate in a remote fashion. So again, these are my notes, I don't mean to speak prematurely, I promised you an update. But I do want to let you know that those discussions are ongoing, let our public know that our discussions are looking at ways that we could examine and perhaps extend to, to, to certain students, again, using some objective criteria academic-related, to try to, to bring and engage students maybe in person even prior to we look to do that generally at the beginning of second semester. We're very aware of the factors that we need, that need to be considered in terms of distancing, in terms of all of the safety issues that we've discussed prior to tonight. But I do hope to bring that to you here in, in, in the near future. While I'm there with high school and middle school, I also want to mention that, as you are aware, the governor did amend his executive order 67, and to address recreational sports. Additionally, the Virginia High School League has created implementation guidelines, including amendments to the contest regulations, to how some of these activities could be conducted that align with the governor's amendments to his executive order. So accordingly, I anticipate that our athletics committee for middle and high school may bring to me a recommendation as far as winter sports. The start date, or the V H S L start date for winter sports is, is I believe December 7th. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that, again, those two discussions, that, those issues may come to you prior to the second semester, obviously, for your consideration. The elementary group, as far as their scheduling, they're looking at different models, they're looking at how they can accommodate all students K-6 for at least part of the day. They're also looking at half-days, four days a week. They've also engaged in discussions regarding possibly pooling staff from all three schools to try to create virtual classrooms that could still accommodate, but then free up resources to perhaps engage additional students at the elementary level. Our health and safety group continues to vet the information, much of the information you have or you've received through Ms. Fisher. They're looking to compile it in a way that could be quote "plan-friendly," I guess. Already we have it in an F A Q format available, that I think they're looking to vet the information she's gone through with all of our F A Qs, with input we continue to receive either through public comment or through email correspondence. So I appreciate their work. Our special populations subcommittee, they are also looking at specifically our students who have special needs, our students who need accommodations according to a 504 plan. And so their discussions are very much parallel to some of the ideas the middle and high school group in particular are discussing. And again, I want to, I want to make sure that you understand the spirit of this is not to burst this apart and have people plan in silos, that's not it at all. It's to be able to focus, but then we're, we talk on Wednesdays about how we can cross, we can collaborate across groups and within groups. So there's a good deal of discussion that's going on by invitation between and within multiple groups at times, because they all need to then consider variables that each of them may be looking at separately, or at least in part. I mentioned our preschool group. Again, they're looking at possible schedules that might allow them to expand what they currently do for our special needs students in that program. We have an instructional support group, and I purposely burst instructional support away from scheduling, to give a group of people an opportunity to look at how can we best support the learning, in particular asynchronous learning. You know, I've heard clearly from many families that Wednesdays are challenging, you know, in our current modality. I anticipate that, you know, as an interim step, if we need to bring students either in park, you know, two days a week, or half a day at the start, I recognize that leaves, that still leaves time for students to engage asynchronously, whether they're in person or not. And so we're looking at ways that we can better support families, better support that modality of learning. They're also looking at, to coordinate with the scheduling groups, to determine if there's additional professional development that we need to extend, that we've, that which we've already offered, how can we extend that, how we can continue that into second semester to best support our teachers. H R, we have H R continuing to work with employees in terms of documented medical needs that we may need to accommodate. They're also monitoring federal legislation. I know that the adjustment to that, or to that regulation that was issued is coming up for the renewal, or at least being revisited come December, so they're keeping an eye on that for us. And they're also looking at the what-if scenarios as far as substitutes and what our availability is for substitute teachers. The facilities and the provisions group, we have two employees actually assigned to this, they're designated to look at our current facilities, the provisions of those facilities, our schools. They're also looking to maintain that inventory of provisions that we've supplied to schools and to develop a communication system when additional or supplemental provisions are necessary. I mentioned there too, that their, this group's efforts helped to codify for you last meeting some of the estimates in terms of supplemental cleaning. And then transportation and nutrition, obviously, a lot of their planning or their work will be contingent on what we ultimately decide in terms of schedule, as far as when we feed kids, how we feed kids, that type of thing. But for now, they are continuing to do a bang-up job, and I will, I want to reach out, because our, a lot of our transportation, our bus drivers, we are utilizing, and they have offered to come help. You know, some of them are, are manning the telephone line that is accessible for those who are having trouble technology-wise. Some of them will soon probably be coming in to help assemble meals for those who are coming up and picking up meals. So I just want to give a shout-out to them, because we've asked for them to be flexible, for this, for them to assume roles they traditionally have not, and appreciate them stepping up and doing that. So again, I want to emphasize publicly, these are not official positions, this is not an official policy or anything, these are simply my notes to you as an update for these committees, the work that they've been engaging in for the last two, two and a half weeks or so. We do have a standing Wednesday meeting where we bring the entire group together virtually, and each then subgroup has a chance to kind of update everybody on the work that they're doing thus far, to keep everybody on the same page. So I will leave it at that. Have any answering questions you may have, or input you may have?
Ms. Gonzalez, did you want to start?
Certainly, thank you, Dr. Benson, this is great. I find this all very encouraging. I do, I, when, as I said, I really like the discussion about, especially for the high school and middle students and some of our special populations, focusing on students who are not succeeding, so some of our more vulnerable, vulnerable learners, and the potential to bring those back prior to the second semester. I, I'm definitely in support of that, and so I guess, when, when do you think you need board approval to, to pursue some of those, those in-person opportunities?
Yeah, I don't, my hope is, and again, I'm speaking a little conservatively, because I don't want to promise something and then under-deliver, but I've talked with Dr. Boyd in particular. I know that there, I've asked, you know, what's the soonest you could get me, you know, some of the logistics that are necessary. So conceptually, at the very least, conceptually, I believe next week, I could bring to you at least an update from that group, and, and I know that we're... I can bring that, let me, let me commit to that, I can bring at least conceptually and perhaps more, you know, how we might go about trying to identify. There are lots of little steps that we would need to consider in terms of identification, you know, the capacity per day, that type of thing. So a lot of logistical things that I don't want to overextend on behalf of that committee, but I am hopeful I can bring you an update as far as their work next week.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
It would come, you know, with the athletics, I know will be a big topic, it is a big topic in our community, but I'd bring that hopefully in concert to you.
Okay, thank you. I have one other question you want me to ask?
I just thought maybe we would just stay on topic, so since you brought up the topic of the middle school and the high school, if we had any more questions, that way we're not kind of like jumping all over. Does everybody approve, agree with that?
Sure.
So anybody else have any questions in regards to the high school and the middle school coming back prior to the beginning of the second semester?
I had a question. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I just want to clarify that...
Go ahead, Ms....
That's only the, not all high school and middle school, just the ones who are identified as needing extra help in sports. Just make that clear to the...
I understand that, you know, I, I talked at last meeting, meeting before and a meeting before that about students that are missing, that are failing two or more courses, and the number was presented by Dr. Benson, that it was, high school's 118 students failing two or more courses, the middle school's 129 failing two or more courses, but also in three through six, there's 115 students that are failing two or more core subjects. So I, I would like to add them into that mix too, along with...
Right, at this moment, we're talking about high school and middle, so let's try to stick with that.
So, no, what they were talking about was bringing students back that were, that were academic standing grades. So I didn't want to leave out, even though you're talking about the high school and the middle school, I didn't want you to leave out the elementary to bring them back under two or more classes being failed.
Mr. Collins, if I may... Mr. Collins, if I may, I would suggest that the, the teachers and the admin in the buildings determine who those students are, that we don't put out a number like that, two or more classes failed, because that's really their wheelhouse and they will know, identify either the ones who aren't logging in, the ones who need additional supports, but I think we need to leave that to them and not put a number on that.
So go ahead, Ms., Ms. Hawk. Sorry.
Thank you. What's her name here?
Yes.
I, I had concern and maybe if you could address at some point what we're doing for the students who have just not shown up. I, I know that we have our typical attendance process that usually ends by September, but I'm sure that didn't take place. So have we, have we identified those students who just did not appear?
Yes, and, and we, we continue to follow up as we do traditionally.
Okay.
There's outreach. I'm su, I'm certain there's outreach on, I know the schools have, have tried to, early on especially, make sure that we made contact with every family. Part of that was just a manifestation of the hotspots, the need to distribute the hotspots and determine who's not. But I'll go back, I think you're correct. The number of students, the spirit of the conversation, and I'll certainly relay to the elementary committee, the, the discussion here tonight. The number of students, you know, the discussions that I have with Dr. Boyd are, to, to the extent we can maximize, you know, the invites and they've, you know, I'm just trying to speak candidly, you know, they've, they've looked at some of the data we've collected before. Some of the students who are struggling have elected to stay virtual, one hundred percent virtual. But nonetheless, the invite would be extended to them if they're struggling. We obviously can't force them in, but we can certainly extend that invitation. But they would keep moving, you know, down the list, so to speak, to make sure that we're not limiting it to just a certain number of students, but we're maximizing what we can do safely for the students that are in the most need. Does that, you know, that's a general statement, they still need to put wheels on that, they still need to determine what the criteria would be in terms of the, who would be, who would be first to be addressed, so to speak, in terms of that opportunity?
I, I would, I would also caution, I mean, you know, when you talk about Governor Northern, executive order sixty-seven address recreational sports, it's kind of hypocritical that allow the winter sports for the middle school and high school without not allowing the kids to come back to school. But I'm all for, I mean, there's so many kids that want to play football and wrestling and, and those other type of contact sports.
Well, they are.
But it seems hypocritical though. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I mean, the concept is difficult, but there are many types of sports that are not direct contact that might be feasible more so than a large group. Certainly, I don't think we would advocate wrestling, but perhaps as a spring sport, golf or tennis or, or whatever type of sport might pursue, I think V H S L is going to be on top of that. They're going to be giving us the information.
And they have, they've issued, and I think it's publicly available, the information that they, they created, they being the V H S L created. And my understanding was there was collaboration between the governor's office, the Virginia Department of Health and V H S L to make sure that the guidelines V H S L eventually issued were in accord with the governor's amendments to that executive order. So certainly I'd, I'd bring you information or I will bring you information about adjustments that are made. I think publicly we've, we've talked about it. I want to make sure that our public understands that I'm sure in those guidelines, it addresses spectators, there are limitations, it may address limitations on, on kind of the ancillary aspects of the game itself. I don't know them fully, but I just, again, wanted to update you that I know it's a hot topic. I know it'll be coming to you during short order and we'll bring it with the actual information for you to consider.
Okay, so anybody else that had a question? So Dr. Benson, so first we were going to bring back our K through two students because we felt that they had, you know, the most need. So now we, we said we couldn't do that because I think the biggest issue was the social distancing and we want the ionization in there. So now we're talking about bringing back high school and middle school students, which is an undetermined number of students, yet I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how we can justify that it's okay to bring back the older students and not really understanding, I, I guess they're going to be able to maintain the social distancing and then also the equity in, in being able to tell one student that you can come back, but you can't come back. I'm, I'm having some common sense issues here.
Let me clarify that the discussions thus far has been to define a finite number of students that can be hosted with social distancing. That's step one. So it's not all, it's not a, it's not all to all comparison in terms of the K two. So.
So we'd have that number of teachers to be able to do that?
Well, again, logistically, I think that's why I didn't want to overpromise. I just wanted to update you on their discussions thus far. We do need to give them time to work through some of the logistical issues, but in concept, it is that they would look at their staffing, look at the school building, the facility itself, determine what is the maximum number of students that we could accommodate in a given time period. And then from that number, then they would look at the list of students who are, are in rank order, the most needy to, to perhaps the less needy, using grades, using other academic measures that they're still discussing, and then begin trying to maximize the number of students we could get in within the limit that they first defined.
So then are we, are we still going to maintain, is it, would it be mandatory that we maintain the six-foot distancing? We're going to use the, the shields, masks required?
Right. It would be three, I think we use three-foot with masks and the shields and all the other measures that we.
Okay, so we have three-foot with masks for K through two. We were able to determine that we had K three-foot with mask in K through two, and that was not acceptable. That's my point. So I want to make sure that we're not going to sit back and say it's acceptable to do something that, in the middle school and the high school, that wasn't acceptable in K through two because we felt those were the most vulnerable students. And now we're saying they're not the most vulnerable students, we're saying that these are the most vulnerable students.
No, ma'am, I'm not saying that at all. I, I still believe that our youngest learners, and I believe the, the Virginia Department of Education identified this early, that our youngest learners, our K, even our preschool through, through second, third grade, those are the students that, that we do want to address. So don't get me wrong, I'm not promoting a middle school, high school discussion that I've mentioned over or prioritizing them over. I'm simply saying that that subcommittee has had discussions and their discussions have been about that. I will pass along the, the same discussion to the elementary and they can consider it as well. But I, I don't want to leave you at all with the impression that we're promoting one over the other, or I am promoting one over the other at all.
So there's a, there's a hundred and thirty people on this committee, right? About a hundred and thirty?
No, sir. There's more than fifty, there's probably fifty to sixty-five somewhere in there.
Fifty to sixty-five. Fifty over thirteen committees. Fifty over thirteen committees.
How many?
Fifty over thirteen committees.
Okay, so you've got fifty parents, teachers, staff, and they suggest to bring the middle and high school back that are, it says here specifically defined as academically standings to possibly attended person, that means their grades. And the elementary suggests models to accommodate all students K through six for part of the week or half days, four days per week, and the committee on special populations says the conversation is how we can better and perhaps more immediately address the in-person learning needs of those students. And of course, we've received numerous emails and people in person that talk about special needs, about how this can't provide that at home. So, you know, we, I, I'm all for bringing them all back. I'm all for bringing as many back as we can get. I'm all for bringing back the ones who need help. So we, we, we need to start making decisions on who's coming back sooner rather than later. So you have all these, you have these people and they're giving you the information, we have tons of information, and so we need to, we need to move forward with something. That's what this means.
This is.
By the way, I just want to make sure it's clear, I mean, I, I don't know how many times I've said it, that we do have a plan. I mean, it's right, we, we have a plan.
Yeah, we, we had a plan in August. We had, you know, I mean, we're not, we're not, we're going to have a plan in August.
So I am sticking to the agenda. I'm talking about what we have in front of us.
What Dr. Benson has given us as part of the agenda is the update of this advisory committee with information that is needed, that we've asked for him to present, update, update of the information. It is simply an update. It is, it is what it is.
And, and it's an update and it is suggestions. Suggestions is board. I mean.
It's, it's a summary of conversations thus far. I, I want to make sure that's clear. I'm not, I'm not proposing anything tonight, I'm not suggesting anything today. I'm simply updating the board on the discussions that are being had within these subcommittees of this group. And as they are further developed, some sooner than later, I will certainly bring them to you in a more, more robust fashion so that you can consider more aspects. You, I understand we're anxious to get into the discussion about some of the specifics about it, some of the logic behind it, but I'd only ask that you allow this, these groups to continue their good work that, in which they're engaged and allow me to continue to update you on that work. And I'll bring to you when ready, any proposal or any, any offering for your consideration.
So I, I mean, I sit here in this, in this spot with the, the rest of y'all and I, and right in front of me is the sign that says, stop kicking the can.
We're not kicking.
So we already know that these kids are, are suffering.
Mr. Collins.
What are you going to do? What does safe mean? Does the safe mean stop?
Just let him talk, Ms. Tolliver, please.
People from coming to school? What is, I mean, I, I think that you just, we meet every Monday and nothing happens.
Ladies, please. Okay.
Are you holding me in?
No, I, I'm trying, I'm, I'm, I'm not. So let's, 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 some of the other board members, they want to make a conver, you know, make a statement. Ms. Tolliver, go ahead.
Just what Dr. Benson said, he put together advisory committee so he can make plans to move forward, and this is an update of conversations of that group. And I feel like it's being turned into a whole nother discussion right now. We need to focus on the agenda item at hand.
Okay.
Ms. Gonzalez, you had a comment?
I do, I agree with Ms. Tolliver. I think, I think Dr. Benson has done exactly what we've asked and that has been providing us with updates which show that we are clearly making progress towards reopening in January. So I find this very encouraging and I think it is our incumbent upon us as a board to continue getting updates from Dr. Benson and letting Dr. Benson and the staff and the committees and those who are actually doing the work and understand who the populations are and what makes the most sense and what schedules should look like, and let them do their job and bring those updates to us for concurrence and review at the appropriate time.
So I don't, I don't think we're going to be able to bring this phase of the middle school and high schoolers back and the elementary K through two back at the same time because we're not going to have the busing situation, the busing availability, right? Because we barely have the busing availability for the K two, or they looking at possibly busing several times during the day, bringing some kids in the morning, taking some kids in the afternoon, then coming back again in the afternoon, running two, two routes.
I thought I went into that plan.
That's what I don't understand. I mean, how, how, excuse me, Mr., Mr. Collins, I'm still talking.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, you know, I mean, that's what, I, I mean, we have to look at, I mean, this may be great, but it's like, so I guess my big question is, are we just yet again going to change the plan completely where we're going to throw out the plan that we were prepared to open on November fifth completely out and we're not looking at that and we're going to start over from scratch again?
Is that my question?
Yes.
They're not, I don't believe they're starting from scratch now. They're, they're using everything we've done since the, the summer, the early summer, all of the information we've collected, all of the planning we've done, you know, that just the health group alone, you have the information that Mr. Collins held up.
I, I agree. You've done a great job.
They're not going back and they're not starting from scratch, but they are looking to, to codify things, put the, things together in a fashion that may help support this. Again, these are, these are early discussions and I wouldn't characterize this as a plan right now. This is a concept that they're exploring and then when it, when it evolves into some type of plan, then I'll be happy to bring it to you all to consider. But no, as the answer to your question, we're not scrapping the work we've done with, in regards to the blue gold, the hybrid or the, the K two.
I, I just think that I would be angry as a parent if you sat here and said, come November fifth or second, you, you, you did not allow our kids to come in because we weren't ready and now here we're sitting here talking about another plan that we're going to bring kids in and pretty much have the same risk mitigation, but it's going to be a different group of kids. I, I guess that's what I'm not understanding.
I'm not limiting it to the secondary at all. I, I think the conversation will be had by the elementary level as well. I mean, I'm certainly going to forward that on to them.
So.
But it, it says right here that they're bringing them back before the beginning of the second semester.
That's the conversation they have, is possible, possibly looking at a, a group of students. And again, this is the secondary, the high school and middle school group. So I, I don't mean to talk, I'm simply saying that it's not that we've been exclusive of the elementary, they simply haven't had that conversation. They've had conversations about other ways that they might expand opportunities beginning second semester, but I, I will certainly relay to them the input I've gotten from you all tonight so they can consider the same type of, of approach. And I don't know for sure that our transportation will be limited as you're assuming.
I, I just, so we were not, with the transportation utilization from the report that we had when we're bringing back the K through two, we were pretty maxed out, that that was really, was that not true?
My comment, if I, if I got a chance to say it.
Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
That in his original plan, the K two, there was, that would do all the K two, but there are also another, so many seats it would accommodate these three hundred and fifty-two students that I speak of.
For the second run.
Right. So there, it, it, it can be done. Under the guidelines that he presented last time.
Any more discussion?
Just one more thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
I'm curious about the transportation for the winter sports and middle school sports. How, how would that be handled? That's just a, a throw out. I don't need a answer.
Mr. Vance, we have a echo down here. Thank you. Do you want to move on to, is any more questions?
Madam Chair, I just have a question. So I heard Dr. Benson say that he would have an update on probably next week on, I forget if it was the high school or the sports, but regardless, I'm an update on a few things. And so do we, I know that our, our meeting schedule at this point in time, I believe we do not have a, another regular meeting scheduled until December fourteenth. I was wondering if we were planning on having a meeting next week to conditional updates to continue our forward progress.
So we did agree a few meetings back that we would have one every Monday until the end of the year?
Okay, great. Can we expect the, I guess, the dates, our calendar dates to be updated so that the public knows we're having meetings?
Ms. Bush, could you please update the websites that are all states for every Monday moving till the end of the year? Thank you.
So can we clarify when our next meeting is at this point in time, our next regular meeting would be next Monday?
So we'll have a work session next Monday?
Work session.
Correct.
We're also meeting Friday.
But we're meeting Friday just to approve the ionization?
We're, we're meeting to approve?
We're meeting to possibly approve, to hopefully approve.
So it'll be an action item, I assume?
It will only be an action, it'll be a special meeting with an action item?
Okay.
Correct, Ms. Bush, right, I'm looking at you. Okay.
Then Monday will be a work session.
Monday will be a work session. Okay.
We possibly meet five o'clock Friday?
Uh, we can, we can discuss that. Yeah. Okay, is everybody available five o'clock on Monday, Friday?
Don't, don't, um, Friday.
Friday, five o'clock on Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
All day Friday. Great. Thursday.
Okay, so are we ready to move on? Everybody? Okay, superintendent's report?
Madam Chair, that really was my superintendent's report to you, was the update from the, the group, so I'll leave it at that.
You don't have anything else to tell us, Dr. Benson?
I think, I think I've told you plenty.
Okay, we have board comment. Ms. Gonzalez, would you like to go?
Certainly, thank you. Um, so I would like to say congratulations to all of the hostess students, even though they're not here anymore, and who are recognized this evening, and I'd also like to commend Ms. Strauss and the DECA students on their accomplishments and contributions during this very non-traditional academic year. I definitely want to thank, give a big thank you to the reopening advisory committees and Dr. Benson for the updates presented this evening. I'm very encouraged. I'm very encouraged by the progress being made and the discussions that you're having. I would also like to address the transportation staff who planned to execute bus runs last week and to our teachers and staff, specifically our K through two teachers and staff, and acknowledge all the hard work, time, and commitment that went into preparing your K through two classrooms and lesson plans for reopening last week, which we then disrupted with last week's vote. I'm optimistic that your efforts are not in vain and can still be applied in January. Your frustration and disappointment with the back and forth nature of our actions and their impacts on you are not at all lost on me. I thank you for all that you have done, and I certainly wish there had not been a need to make such a decision, but I know we're on the right path now, as evidenced by the advisory committee updates given by Dr. Benson this evening. And lastly, but most certainly not least, I would like to thank all of the parents and community members who came out this evening to voice your concerns. I know that you are very frustrated with our actions, and I am truly sorry for the grief that we have caused. I know the struggles with virtual education are very real. I know it does not work for all students or for all families. I know you want your children to be back in the schools, and I do too. Sitting up here and listening to you, heartbreak isn't any more fun for us than it is for any of you. And so I just want to say that I hear you, and I'm committed to supporting weekly meetings and progress updates as we march towards a second semester reopening. That is all.
Ms. Tolliver?
Everything, Ms. Gonzalez. I don't really have any further comment. I agree, it's been frustrating and, and time-consuming and heartbreaking for many. I just hope that we can, can continue to move forward. I think this is, we're beyond a good start. We had a good start a couple of weeks ago. We're getting there, and I too agree that we should commit and plan to reopen in January, as we originally intended to do.
Ms. Hock?
Thank you. Again, all that Ms. Gonzalez said, I, I think we, we do understand, we do hear, we're, we're not deaf, and certainly in our own lives, we're certainly having the impact of children and grandchildren and, and working situations. It's, this is a terrible time to be living through. I, I do think that we have an extremely dedicated group of teachers, and I want to emphasize people like Belinda Cameron and Dee Strauss, the, the school bus drivers, the, the social workers, that Jeff Smith who's out there trying to find the children who aren't there, who aren't showing up on the screen. We will come to a point that our children will be back. I don't know how normal it will be. Nothing seems to be normal in this, in this world. But if we can help them be as safe in returning to, to this new normal, that will be our goal for the teachers and the students. And I support Mr. Collins with, with his questions and, and his detail, his need for detail. It is important to us, and that's how we work as a board. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
So I realize sometimes my, my, my speech is sharp, and for those that, um, there's no ill intention for my sharp speeches, I'm, I'm passionate like all the community members are, and sometimes it gets a little sharp. I also want to let you all know that I have done three online courses, elementary, middle, and high school. So I wanted to experience myself. And I can tell you that if I, my children were in school now, I couldn't do it. I'd like to thank the employees that are working hard every single day. I see them, I see, I see them, what they do. I hear what they do. And, and don't let it go because I, I am passionate about having students back in person, that I don't hear you. The employees that aren't for in-person, I brought forth some solutions. The ionization, the, the cleaning and the testing. So it's not, but I also, I spoke with a member tonight, and they said, a former member, I'm sorry. And they, and they, and I asked for advice, and the advice was that you have to have buy-in from everyone. So right now, we're not getting buy-in for everyone. So I was hoping that those solutions would help buy-in for those that aren't, is not, not as excited about some of the things that are going on. I still hope we can get to, back to in-person sooner than January. And I do hope that some of our children that are, that are in dire need of education can go back, and I still support the virtual, so don't, don't misunderstand that. I also want to suggest that we need to be careful when we're spending public funds, when we talk about large sums of money, that we need to make sure that we know exactly what we're spending on. We can't move, we shouldn't just jump at something because it's, it's a great idea. We should, um, we should, the public, so that when people came up to here and the ones online talked about us making decisions, that we're not making decisions. So, and, and I got an email either today or, I don't know, I can't, I, I check my email like every three hours, and I got to keep up with them. And they suggested that, um, that the board might want to have more conversations. And, and they're right. More conversations now, we know the rules for board members meeting, but I, I haven't reached out to Ms. Gonzalez and Ms. Tolliver. I, I, I could tell you that. So I think that we need to have, we do have different opinions, and we need to reach out more so we can move this faster forward. So I suggest that to the boards that we have some conversations and see if we can come up with solutions, whatever they may be.
But they need to be legal, legal conversations.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm not, I'm, everybody here knows what the legal conversations for board members are, I'm sure. And, let's see if anything else in my notes. I think that's been enough for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
So, um, so I, I went to visit the schools prior to November 2nd. And then I also went to visit some of the schools. I haven't gotten a chance to get out to Steelston after November 2nd. And I, I've, I've been in the classrooms, I've seen the desks, I've seen, you know, the, they've done amazing jobs. I, I think, you know, as I've said before, the teachers are heroes, the way that they stepped up to the plate and just took, took over. You know, this is all new waters for us. We, we've never had to do this before. And, you know, if, if we sat back and we said that we're not doing this and we're not concerned, then I would be concerned, because every step of the way, I think everybody should be concerned with how this is going to go. You know, personally, Dr. Benson and your staff, I, I feel bad. I feel sorry. I think you guys have worked really hard since June, you know, when you gave us the first proposal in July, which has been modified, I think is an ever-changing living document, this COVID-19 Health and Mitigation Plan and Procedures. I think that you guys worked hard on the blue and gold. I think you worked hard on this last one. And, you know, I had full faith that you and your staff were willing to execute whatever you had put out there, knowing that you were not putting your kids in danger. I had faith in that, and I, I don't really understand why it was pulled away. And we sit here again today, and, you know, we're talking about possibly bringing kids back, you know, before the end of the year. And then we've, we've talked about not doing that before because of other issues. And now, you know, we talk about possibly bringing them back to January, but it's, I don't want to give anybody a sense of false hope. And I, I feel really bad because I feel that, that that's what we're doing. And I, you know, asked the board that, you know, we need to come up with, with, with hard, hard dates, hard facts. What is it going to take to get our kids back in there? What are the risk mitigations that we're going to be able to accept? And, and move on, and let the parents know that. You know, I'm just, I'm just concerned that, you know, we're not only kicking the can, but there, there's a sense of false hope. We're going to open up in January. Well, what does that mean? What does that look like? We don't, we haven't really identified it. And, you know, Dr. Benson and his staff is coming up with, with these committees, and they're coming up with all these other things. And, you know, is that going to be enough? I don't know. But I just hope, you know, that, that we can come to a decision sooner than later. I think that the board is heavily divided. I think that opinions run deep, and sometimes opinions aren't respected across the board, and, and that's a tragedy. But, you know, hopefully with everybody coming out tonight, we've, we've heard loud and clear, you know, that the, not only is the board divided, but the community is divided, and we, we have to listen to the majority. I think that our code of conduct states that we should be listening to, and I did have it, I did have it up here, that we should be not only listening to the data, but we should be listening to public input, and that our objective is the education of our children. And our children are our future, and I think that they should be the number one thing that we need to look at right now. So that's all I have to say.
I think she's referring to the honey whale.
Yeah.
So, so Madam Chair, could, could I suggest Dr. Benson might afterwards get up with her and?
Yeah. So that, that is, yeah. So for the people that are virtual, they can't really understand, but there is a parent in the, in the audience that's asking a question. And I think, and just to answer that quick, one thing I did want to mention is I, I have asked Dr. Benson to make it a lot more readily available on our website, all of the information. This Health Mitigation Plan and Procedures, all of our packets and all the information can be, can also be found on our agendas under the board packets. But I think that if we could possibly just take all of the information that we have of our risk mitigation that we're using, plus of the plans that we're having, if it could just be on a little push button on the front, on our website, not, it takes me forever. Now, I'll admit I'm a little bit computer illiterate. I have issues, but it's very frustrating if it could be right there in bold. You click the button, we have all of this information at our fingertips so that everybody can see it. Because I even talked to teachers, and they had no idea that we had this Health Mitigation Plan and Procedures, this 34-page document. No idea that we had this.
So, Madam Chair, can we get back to the agenda?
Yes. So. Close session. Yep.
Pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711.8.1 for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitute, stipends, and resignation of employees of the school board.
Ma'am?
Ma'am? Ms. Ward, I'm sorry.
Second.
No. And pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711.8.6, discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected.
What are you reading?
Second.
All in favor, it's a closed motion.
I didn't see that in the agenda.
Oh, that's not the motion I have. Oh, I'm sorry. I was reading an older one.
Someone else to read it? Pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711.a.1 for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitute, stipend, and retirement of employees of the school board. And pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711.a.7, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultations pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefings in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the school board.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair, it's aye. We are now in closed session.
Well, not me. I don't have anyone here.
You called me, I'll bet. Who did you call?
What's the word?
Are we ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Should I do it?
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Are we ready to come out of closed session? Somebody else better read this.
I have an old one.
Okay. I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to state code 2.2-3712.D only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard discussed or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second, certify.
Certify, certify.
Certify.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Personnel is presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to adjourn. Meeting surrender.